Senator.
Senator.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Good evening.
You should have before you a memo dated December 27th titled The Robert J. DePietre Community Center Roof Repairs. You may recall when we talked about last month about the municipal center roof repairs, I told you we'd have this coming up before you pretty soon. This is kind of the same deal. We had a consultant come in to take a look at the DePietre Center roof. He came up with some recommendations. We have money in the CIP dated 2011 to 2016 for $34,500. We went out to bid on December 2nd, advertised in the Sentinel newspaper and the cable TV channel along with our website, had a pre-bid meeting on December 15th, and accepted bids up until 11:00 a.m. on the 23rd. Bids came in as Coal Roofing Company Incorporated out of Baltimore, Maryland for $22,180, J. and K. Contract Incorporated out of Capitol Heights, Maryland for $28,540, and Rough Roofers out of Baltimore, Maryland for $41,950. Just like this roof, this is mainly a repair, not a replacement. The consultant said we have a number of flashing issues, that type of thing, on the roof, not necessarily a whole roof replacement at this time. So that's what this project will take care of. The administration took a look at it along with the city solicitor, the bid package, and we would like to recommend that the mayor and city council accept the bid by Coal Roofing for $22,180.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas? Councilmember Smalls?
No questions.
Councilmember Ricks?
What experiences have you had over there that create the problem?
We're having some roof leaks, typical, the ceiling tile stains, that type of thing, Mr. Ricks. And again, the consultant got up on the roof, took a look at what's going on, where ceiling leaks were, and saw many areas that needed flashing and other repairs, but not a total replacement at this point.
Well, we all know that, especially from down, like at the beach, that, you know, water runs. It doesn't necessarily have a hole in it, and then it travels.
Right.
So I'm hoping that they've taken that into consideration.
I think so. And I think probably we'll ask them to take a look at a couple of areas that the consultant is a little bit more concerned about, which may be a change order to this contract, but we'll try and be a little proactive to areas that might cause a problem in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If we're okay with this, everyone, we'll go forward on January 9th and put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Second on the agenda is ordinance number 1732 and ordinance to amend Chapter 17, Article 7, Section 139 of the Laurel City Code to provide no through truck traffic on streets in the Willow Oaks community. Good evening, Mr. McCullough.
Good evening, Madam President, councilmembers, mayor. We've talked about this at a previous work session. We've had one council meeting on it. One of the concerns, since we basically know what this is about, it's the Willow Oaks development. It's an over 55 single-family home development. And I guess the concern there is that as some of the people age, they're not quite as observant of trucks that might come through as traffic, and they're concerned about safety. When the ordinance was to amend, the ordinance to allow us to put up no through truck traffic that would be more than 12,500 pounds. The concerns that have been raised is that are we really looking at solving the problem of why trucks are down there in the first place? One of the things that has changed since then, since we last talked about this, is we've been in discussion with the Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation. This is their road. They actually own the road, Old Sandy Spring Road that goes down that way. So we're not responsible for the, or don't have the jurisdiction on the signage in their jurisdiction. All I can say is that since then, the signs have been moved, and the signs that were relocated are some signs that say, no.
Weight limit?
No, it's not a weight limit.
No through traffic?
It's basically, it's no through traffic, and there's a dead end at the end of the street. And we've had those changed, so that one of those signs is almost across from the filling station there, the Exxon station. And then there was one that said dead end, as you got almost to the very end, and that's been moved up to Dorset. So at Dorset, there's a no outlet, is what the sign says. So there's two no outlets, one across from the Exxon station, and one at Dorset Road as you go forward. And then also at Dorset, as you go forward on one side, it says dead end, dead end ahead. So we've had those signs relocated, and I think that will address the person that is inadvertently, if they're at least see the signage, may hopefully get the attention of the truck driver that is lost or is following there in his GPS that's sending him down there because he thinks it's Sandy Spring Road and not Old Sandy Spring Road. So that's the one change that's happened since we last discussed it.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Smalls?
Mr. McCullough, if you'd just kind of help me out here. You mentioned Prince George's County. I understand that Sandy Spring Road is not a city road. Were the signs located on Sandy Spring or on a city control street?
There was not. They're on the county's right of way.
Okay.
And I really can't discuss how the signs got moved. I'll just say that they got moved, and they are relocated. There did not used to be a no outlet sign as you, from the signal light, through traffic should make a turn there and go over and go out 198. We've got, there is a sign there now that says no outlet, and that's been relocated.
Do we have control over the placement of those signs?
No, we do not.
So, could be that they could disappear again, or?
I don't think so. I know the people that are with the DPWT that are in this area, and they're aware of the signs. And while there may not be any official, I'm not sure how to say this, but there's no official word on this, but it's been done. And the people that I've talked to are okay with it.
Okay. So with that said, because I'm kind of not sure where we're going now, this ordinance, 1732, what are we proposing to do with this?
The ordinance still allows us to put up a no through truck traffic on trucks that are more than 12,500 feet, ton, 12,500 pounds. This will allow the city to install three signs that would tell truckers not to turn in there if they're over this weight.
And those signs would be at Berry Leaf?
And the signs, the signs are not intended to impact the housing development individually. The signs are intended to try to prohibit, or at least make truck drivers aware that if they continue down this, this Old Sandy Spring Road, there's no place for them to turn around.
Got it.
So this was an effort to try to eliminate truck traffic before it gets there by advising them that they don't have an outlet. We have not changed anything about the ordinance, but we've tried to address a bigger problem that might be related to the ordinance.
Okay. So the ordinance is as?
They now have enforcement powers, quite frankly, is what we're doing here.
But not on Sandy Spring Road?
Correct.
No.
Right. Got it. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Ricks?
So how do we solve the problem? This doesn't solve the problem. If, by the time, by the time the tractor trailer goes through Berry Leaf and back out on the Sandy Spring Road, and somebody calls the police, they're gone.
Correct. Like 90% of our issues when citizens call. So the officer's got to witness it. And there's not as big an issue up there as this has been made out to be.
And I agree with that. And that's my point. I mean, I just don't like a proliferation of signs just because someone says we need a sign. I think there's enough out there already that don't do what they're supposed to do. So I just don't see how we are solving the citizens' problem. I think we've made an effort to solve it by putting the signs at the beginning of the street, but still by that time, by the time that truck driver sees that sign, it's too late. He's got 53 foot behind him that he's got to turn somewhere to go somewhere to get out of the situation he's in, or she.
From my perspective, the first sign that says no outlet, if I'm a responsible driver, I'm at a, excuse me, I'm at a signal, traffic signal light, and when I see that sign, there's also a gas station there I can turn into if I want to.
And next thing you know, we're going to hear about the gas station and the danger of a tractor trailer making turns through gas stations.
I can't control all of the stupidity.
No, I am not asking you to control it all. I'm just looking for a way to solve the citizens' problems. And I think the way that we're going to try and solve it is by putting that sign there at the beginning of the road.
Well, that sign is already there. It's there right now.
Then putting two more signs up there that then create an infraction against some unlucky truck driver, to me, doesn't solve the problem for any of them.
Councilmember Lewis?
Let me come back to what Eddie said a minute, but what's the first break for trucks? 6,500 pounds? The tagged trucks? In the second break, 10,000 pounds?
I don't recall.
Where 12,500 pounds?
That's one that's been in use for a long time.
In the city?
In the city. We have several signs like this, one on, if you're on Main Street and you go past 7th, there's a sign there. There's one on Montgomery Street as you're going up toward Pilate School. So this is, the precedent has been set for those signs.
They used to be signed on Irving Street, and they were 10,000 pounds. They were there. Came down eventually, at some point. Now, we've had plenty of complaints up here, because trucks, we've been there. But I'm just trying to determine my line with 12,500 pounds. Is there a logical break at that point?
I'm sure there probably is, but I don't recall what it is.
MBA classification.
I was going to say state.
MBA classifications. But I thought the break for, I'm just thinking about 6,500 to 10,000 pounds, mine, for some reason. But okay, let me come back to what Eddie said. I think that the, I don't like signs either, but the fact is, there's going to be somebody that's going to turn down with a tractor trailer, or a 24-foot delivery truck, or some kind of box truck. It's just going to so happen that, that, you know, these policemen, if they turn down there, you can come down behind and see where he's going to go. It's already set.
Mike, turn your mic on, please. Turn your mic on. Sorry. I can't hear you.
So, again, I'm not, it's not the unlucky truck driver. I hope the truck driver was paying attention when he saw the first sign, didn't turn down there. So I, again, I, as I think the mayor pointed out, the problem isn't as big as it sounds like, except it is concerned, is of concern for some of the residents up in, what is it, over 55 development now? They've changed to 55. So again, if we put a couple of signs up and it makes them feel better, I think that has value to the residents. And more importantly, if somebody does turn down there with a tractor trailer with 40 foot hanging off the back of it, they're going to get a ticket.
No, they're not. They're going to be gone.
No, no. Again, a lot of tickets happen because Laurel's policemen and women happen to be there when they see something happen, especially when it comes to, I mean, there's enough cars go through there, police cars go through that intersection. So again, does it solve the problem? No, I don't know how you solve the problem, to be honest with you. I don't know.
I agree with you.
Okay. But if it makes the residents feel better, and it does provide some enforcement if in fact a police officer happens to see somebody, I'm fine with this. That's my thoughts.
Thanks. Councilmember Nicholas?
Yeah, I agree. I'm just trying to understand this whole sign thing. It sounds like it's more with the signs being put there, it's more of a safety measure, a safety precaution?
That's the rationale that's been put forward from the residents and the homeowners. They feel that it's a safety concern with the trucks going through there, with the senior citizens living in that area.
So it is a place for them to turn around?
Well, Berry Leaf, there's three sections there, and if you turn in, you actually have to drive through and come back out. It's kind of a circle drive.
Okay.
But if you don't have the signs up, they can drive through.
Oh, okay.
Because you can't enforce unless you have them up. Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Thank you. All right. We'll put this up for a vote on January 9th. Number three on the agenda is resolution to amend, resolution number 1493 relating to the Laurel Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. Mr. Lasky?
Yes, ma'am. As you're aware, we've had a senior citizens advisory committee for many years. However, since the new Laurel-Beltsville Senior Center came into being, and the lease with the Phelps Center, we chose not to renew. A lot of the organizations that were part of the Senior CAC have gone up to the new center. So therefore, what we would like to do is combine the Parks and Rec Citizens Advisory Committee with the Senior CAC Committee, so to speak, have a couple of members from the current CAC, Senior CAC, come on the Parks and Rec. We've already got one that has joined us, and therefore, we feel like we can cover both senior issues along with Parks and Recreation issues at the same time. So that's what we'd like to do.
Thanks. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, just in my mind, I'm trying to, if they've got an issue, if the seniors have got an issue, and they bring it to this committee, then they would bring the attention of the administration, they shoot off a letter to the county. Is that correct, the Park and Planning Commission?
Sure.
That'd probably be the process?
Yes, yes.
That'd be one way to do it, yes.
Yeah, okay. It wouldn't require a vote of this council, just send a letter off to county council and or call the director of the, there's a director down in the centers, I remember. Yeah, okay, good. So this should work fine.
Yeah. We have a very good relationship with the current administration at the center, so things are working pretty well so far.
Okay, good.
Okay. Councilmember Nicholas?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Councilmember Smalls?
Mr. Lasky, with the senior citizens advisory committee, what kind of items did they discuss here? Were they all kind of recreation-related, or were there other kinds of topics?
Other kinds of topics, mainly.
Had to do with the building, what I said.
Had to do with the building. For a long time, they discussed what had to do with the building. It's other issues concerning, you know, who can we get to take care of our yards, who can we take care of our sidewalks during snow. Those issues that affected them individually is what they wanted to talk about most of the time.
Well, how will those issues, if you're going to have two members that are part of the Parks and Rec CAC, that committee primarily discusses, you know, park and recreation-related items? So where would those kinds of issues, as you mentioned, that the senior citizens advisory committee was discussing other than park and recreation-related, where would they be addressed, or will they be?
Well, I kind of feel those issues that the seniors talked about at their committee meetings were probably not Parks and Rec or Senior CAC issues. They were their own issues to themselves, and I understand that. But I think what the senior citizens advisory committee was set up to do, and just like the Parks and Rec Citizens Advisory Committee, was to deal with activities and functions that the seniors can enjoy and appreciate and be part of, and to make the community better. And I think we can still do that with the one committee, with the Parks and Rec Citizens Advisory Committee.
And I guess any of those other kinds of questions or concerns could be directed to the CA.
Right, right.
And we could, from time to time, we will get those type of calls. They're not easy to fix.
How, my other question would be, how will they, you say there's one member from the CAC, the senior citizen CAC currently sitting on the Parks and Recs, how will the other member be chosen?
Well, currently, we do have a full committee. However, we will be recommending probably one individual be replaced because that individual hasn't been to a meeting for quite a while.
Okay.
So if that is in fact the case, we'll ask for the mayor and council to appoint a senior citizens to, a senior citizen to replace that individual.
Okay. So it'll be done in the same fashion that we do in the other appointments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Ricks?
Well, I totally agree with this. I've been experiencing the, both talking to Mike and understanding what he wanted. I totally agree that this is going to be a move forward, especially with the new senior citizen center, and it'll make it probably a lot more positive and probably a lot more dialogue than we give it credit for. So I totally agree with this and look forward to voting for it. My note from the record here that it's not been sponsored by a council member. If it hasn't been, then I will sponsor it.
We'll fix that before the meeting. Okay. Then we'll have this up on January 9th. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Number four is, we're actually just discussing an amendment.
Yes, we've been, Laurel Clergy Association has asked the city to look at its zoning regulations with regard to churches, and to make some of the zones less restrictive, to make it easier for churches to locate therein. Staff has been working on this with the mayor for, I guess, roughly the last, maybe three months. We've come up with the proposal here that we think is workable and will benefit the city, and will also promote churches that want to be in these particular areas. We wanted to bring it to the council first and get your reaction, so that the time that it is shared with the clergy association, a lot of the wrinkles will be ironed out of it.
Are there any specifics that we?
Let me, this was a commitment, I think, for those that were on the prior council, that when they came and testified, I'd made a commitment that we'd look at it and make some possible changes. So that's how we got to these meetings. That's, I guess, at least two good meetings with them, bounced a lot of different ideas off. But my, as I said to them, I think churches in the community are good, it's good for the community, but we also need to make sure that we respect the communities and that we respect the business community, and some of this can affect both of those as well. So we have to come up with a position that helps to promote and allow without causing issues within the communities, and that's what we've attempted to do here. I think that we've accomplished that, but we'll see.
Councilmember Smalls?
You want, I think maybe we ought to have Jack.
You want to, I'm sorry?
Certainly. We looked at the Prince George's County's zoning code, and the changes are very similar to what they have, except in our case, I thought it was, Prince George's was too restrictive, so I've combined, in some cases, and eliminated in others.
Jack, I'm sorry, if I could, if you remember, the biggest concern they had was that we required churches as a special exception. And I kind of agreed with that because it gives protections to both sides, but they brought up some good things and points, and that's where Jack comes in. Sorry.
On seven of the nine current residential districts, as a special exception, we put a located on?
Jack, could you speak up a little bit, please?
Certainly. Located on a lot less than one acre in size would be a special exception. Church located in a building constructed on a lot less than one acre in size would be a special exception. However, in all seven instances, if you had a church located on a lot, not less than one acre in size, which would be an acre or greater, then it would be a permitted use. In seven of the nine residential categories, also in four of the seven commercial categories, it would be the same if you had an acre or greater, it would be permitted. And if you had an MXT, which is a transportation-oriented zone, that would be a special exception, but it would also have to be approved in the concept site plan of the MXT. But that would be the only change in the MXT. So it would have to be there from the very beginning.
And the flexibility is still a lot with the commission as well, under this.
That's correct.
Under planning?
Yeah.
Okay. The parking and the permit use, and whatever their plans were, would still have to go through.
That is correct, in the MXT.
Thanks. Councilmember Smalls?
I have no questions now.
Councilmember Ricks?
I have no question either. I'd like to read it over and digest it, and then be able to discuss it more intelligently later.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah, we, now, I hate to compare us to Prince George's County. City of Laurel is, what, two and a half miles across, approximately? We're a very compact city. We've got a restaurant on Main Street right now that's struggling because they can't even get a beer and wine license. Now, that law was passed because the churches wanted to restrict something.
That's correct.
And now they've come to us and say, hey, be less restrictive with us. Well, if you open up one or two more churches on Main Street, you'll never be able to put another restaurant that has a beer and wine license back on Main Street. That is a problem. It's a big problem. It's killing Main Street. We've got a restaurant that's trying to relocate, and I don't think that Carl's been able to find a place, has he, Carl Mangos? They got a beer and wine license now. They can't come to Main Street. Now, I don't know how many churches have gotten Laurel. Ten? We used to have 13. I don't know. There's more than 10. And again, I sympathize with Kevin, because Kevin McGee was the one that came in here and spoke. But he's got to respect the business community, too. And by allowing some, and again, let me come back to special exceptions. As Mr. Manzi has told me, the whole rationale for special exceptions has changed over the years, from 30 years ago when I went on the planning commission. Okay? And I hate to say it, it's gotten more permissive because of what happens when they take you to court. So let me, I'm going to have to think a lot about this, but I am not in favor of this ordinance as it sits right now, being more permissive to churches. I go to church every week, a lot of people do. But like I say, there's more than 10 churches in the city right now. And if we're going to restrict ourselves, then let's just tell the business people, get out of Dodge, because we're going to have a problem. There used to be a church down C Street, it's not there anymore. It's in the storefront. You put it in the MXT where you hoped to open some kind of a restaurant, you're in trouble. So all I'm saying is, we need to consider the impacts on our businesses as we try to bring businesses to Laurel. And maybe my friend Reverend McGee ought to go to Annapolis and say, look, let's change this 500-foot rule.
They've done that, my dear.
Huh?
They've done that.
Yeah, I know. Well, let them be a little pushy about that, and get that law changed, and maybe then we can consider these things, so both the businesses and the churches are on this level playing field. Again, that's, you know, I mean, we have a hurdle for special exceptions for liquor licenses in Laurel. We got rid of it?
Yeah.
Well, it kept my friend Robbins out of Laurel. They moved out in two days. I'm sorry. That's all I've got. That's my thought. And again, I'm just trying to be fair to the business people, and if we're going to build up Main Street, if we're going to build up what happens over in some other areas that I think that this might have impact on, MXT is a real issue. Because that means you're trying to get some kind of mixed use, and all of a sudden, somebody plops a church, or corner church, storefront church, some kind of in there. There's going to be lots of parking in an MXT. They say, well, jeez, I can only seat 50 people in here. It's a storefront church. And again, I'm just trying to be fair to the business people. And if we're going to build up Main Street, if we're going to build up what happens over in some other areas that I think that this might have impact on, MXT is a real issue. Because that means you're trying to get some kind of mixed use, and all of a sudden, somebody plops a church or a corner church, storefront church of some kind in there. There's going to be lots of parking in an MXT. They say, well, jeez, I can only seat 50 people in here. It's a storefront church. And now you just, it just encompasses the whole project because of the 500-foot rule.
But with the MXT, it would have to have been in the original approved concept plan.
I understand that.
Okay, so if the concept plan, the MXT exists, and three years later, 10 years later, a church wants to come into MXT, they couldn't because it's not part of the original concept.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that.
So it makes a provision for them. So if somebody's doing an MXT that includes a residential component, and they want to put a church in because they're that kind of, they want a church, then if it's provided for originally, they're okay. But if it's not provided for originally, it wouldn't happen.
Well, it's hard to turn church down.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, Kristi. I just, I'm very concerned about this, how it impacts a city like Laurel, where you don't have great distance between things. Everything's pretty much in close proximity. I mean, you've got Main Street, you've got, you've got some other areas where this could have potential impact. For example, if in fact where the townhouse units were built across from Gray Green Road, that was going to be a church originally, came from the planning commission. And I think the planning commission suggested they really wanted to do something else there, so they sold it to those people. That means if you had a hotel across the street, they wanted to put in a bar, and rest of them, they couldn't do it. All I'm suggesting is, we need to be careful what we're doing to ourselves. And again, I think that we ought to have all the churches people need. But we've got a large number of churches already, and it is in fact hurting us on Main Street to some extent. That's my observation.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Nicholas?
Well, I just look forward to more discussion.
Donna, ma'am?
Yes?
One of the things that was on the news tonight on Channel 4 was the Prince George's County Liquor Board is considering issuing licenses to grocery stores without the number of square foot that was required in Montgomery County. So there's another double whammy that could certainly hurt us by that sort of situation. So I think we have to maybe get some more information, if Kim could find out what that is all about, and get us the information before we think any more about this.
What we would like is your, if you could send a memo on different areas that you got, what this is about. We need to have the input.
From the council. Thank you. And thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
To discuss a real...
We'll need Mr. Manzi, Kristi, Carl, and Jack. Do we need Michelle?
Maybe not at this point.
Who else?
I made a motion, ma'am. Can I make a point of personal privilege here? I noticed that when I got the memo, it misstated, I think, the purpose.
For executive session?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wait a minute. Yeah, read the purpose.
The following statement is made regarding the adjournment of the city council executive session on this date. Reason for adjourning into executive session is to consider the acquisition of real property and to consult with legal counsel. The authority for the executive session is contained in the state government, Article 10508, A3 and 7.
That's what we go by.
Are you?
Who says under that?
Councilmember Nicholas.
Okay, councilmember Lass?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Yes.
Councilmember Smalls?
Yes.
Councilmember Rex?
Yes, based on that to council.
Councilmember Querry?
Yes.